Evening, I'm going to open the December 7th, 18, 2024 Select Board Meeting. Adjustments to the agenda, I'm going to have a short executive session, other than that, does anyone have anything?
Do you have anything about the Sheriff's Department?
Yes, we received their budget, it's um. That will be part of our budget discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Just where? Please let me know. I'll take a motion to per the minutes of November 20, 2000, no, it should be December 4th, 2024, sorry.
I'll make the motion to per the minutes, I'll sign at that motion.
Do you have any corrections or additions to minutes? Carrying on, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or carried? Comments from the community? Okay, comments from the community? Carrying on then, we'll move on to correspondence. We have a notice from Veterans in Need. They're writing to inform you about veterans incorporated in our services, our missions is to help the homeless veterans gain self-sufficiency through holistic supportive services including housing, employment, and training, case management, food security, health services, family support programs at the annual health. We rely upon referrals to our organization and would like to ask your help in identifying Vermont Veterans Community. So I'll leave this with Michelle, the office. You know if anyone, there's a resource or town veterans can access. So we have town property, do you know what we're supposed to do with that?
I just put that in, everyone said that town came, so I don't know if that's a correspondence or that, did that kind of come under the budget?
It would just go in the town report. American Red Cross is looking for donations.
Actually not, it's a thank you.
Oh, they're thanking us for our support for the year. We have the Lemoyle County Sheriff's Department's report for November, which I'll pass around for you to review. Lemoyle County Planning Commission. It's their report for the town report. Lemoyle Courthouse had their final 25, 26 budget. Their budget's in here, we don't have a say in that whatsoever, so we can just put it in the town report. We don't get a vote on that. And also the LCT sent their annual due dues report and unemployment insurance assistance, those all can go in the town report. Well, I see. Kurt won't be able to meet with us tonight, but he sent our work during his time. We're a little bit, five minutes early, but um. Roy is here, Monica to Megan, thank you Megan. To talk about 30% design plan to the cultural bridge project. You know, this is a hazard mitigation grant that we're applying for. They've been working very hard and trying to do the cost benefit ratio, is that it?
To get a duck's line, yeah.
To FEMA to see if it will qualify, it's been a lot of work, I know Megan, thank you.
And that collective, they've worked really hard on the BCA as well. So they did get it up to a qualifying point, which is pretty news. Yeah, so I have, I'll hand these out as well, we have brought enough properties and has the draft 30% design plan, and then also they have the top estimate packet. And so Roy, Jeff, and Monica Quinn are here, they're trying to get some doom. Monica's going to kick it off with a, you know, just pre-presentation explanation of the draft bridge design. And Roy's going to kind of say this is a flooding restoration and town protection and we see a portion of the project. But let me just hand these out, so you already have these passed without our folks to have in front of you. And yeah, we are working with the team here to prepare, kind of walk into care of the mitigation grant. Help fund essentially the final design installation phase of this project. And you know, continuing to work it up more through the rest of the 30% design phase. So I'm going to hand off to, I think Monica's going to start.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Yeah, we're going to quickly go through the plans and then leave some more time for questions and comments. So this is kind of the main structure sheet, you can see on the bottom right, our section. This is from the previous select board meeting that we landed on the two lanes. There is a little bit of a shoulder as well, so there's no designated pedestrian area, but given, you know, maintenance concerns and the rural nature, projected traffic on this road, it should be safe for cars and people to be on this bridge as it is, as it's shown here with 24 feet curb to curb. And that just shows those pre-stressed concrete box beams that we touched on in the last meeting as well. And the guard rail that is both pedestrian and vehicle tested. Yep, and then we have the elevation of the bridge, which shows that new span. That will be, it's the new hydraulic opening, which we'll touch more on, and it'll be able to pass a lot more debris. The roadway has also been elevated a bit. And it's going to tie into the grade of Gulf Road a little bit closer to North Wilkett Road to get that low core of the bridge as high as we can without it being any, you know, noticeable big lump for cars. Here in the plan view, you can see we've added some degrading and the scour protection. And you can see that new alignment with the skew of the bridge will match what we think the, or project the Wild Branch to be doing in this area. So that'll be a lot better hydraulically. So this is the proposed site plan, and you're going to again see those grades tying in a little bit closer to North Wilkett Road. And then past Paul's driveway there with the integrating onto existing. And it's just a more zoomed out view with some of the existing stuff on there too. And there's the cobble deposit, which Roy can can talk about a little bit.
So part of the project, we were trying to restore flood plain. And this cobble bar is built up, so the bar's going to remain there, we're just going to lower it a couple feet. The bridge, the undersized bridge has been blocking the sediment and forcing the river to the left side of the page, leading to excessive erosion. So our plan is to just lower the bar a couple feet so that when a flood comes, the river can more readily spill on to the bar and have a better alignment with the proposed bridge. We've done this in a bunch of spots and the bars typically remain because it is on the inside of a bend. However, maybe the the front edge of the bar might might shrink a little bit. And we sort of want that so the bulk of the flow can go straight into the structure. The river's flowing from upstream to downstream. And that will put a lot less stress on the abutments if we get the alignment a little better, so. Paul, I think I know you, I heard you had some concerns, but the bar is actually going to remain there. It's probably going to deposit still on the inside bend and you'll have periodic layers of sand and cobble put on that after flooding. So I wanted to mention that. Let's see, Monica, maybe, I think one thing to notice, maybe I'll start Monica and you can finish up because there's a little bit of both river and structural here. You can see the dotted 100-year floodline and how we're dropping that a couple feet approaching the bridge. And this is really important, so in a big flood, when we get a quick intense storm, there's going to be a little more space for trees to go under the bridge. Notice that for a smaller flood, you don't have quite as much benefit in terms of flood reduction. But still, the dotted line is higher, meaning the flood levels are dropping a little bit. And here you can kind of see the the old cord of the bridge, the bottom of the beam is being elevated a bit. So between the drop and the flood wave, the flood level and the raise of the bridge, you have a lot more space. We gave the recommended at least 20% vertical to allow trees to get through. And then you can see the change in the, the footings are going to be the same, but they're getting spread out. Monica, maybe I'll turn it to you to talk about that piece.
Yeah, yeah, we figured out that after the the borings that we had performed, that we could definitely set our footings at a reasonable depth and have like a solid abutment that we could have a little taller to raise that low core of the bridge. And then, you know, grade the road out appropriately. And this, this drawing is is a different vertical versus horizontal scale. So it actually is pretty, pretty significant, the amount of area you're going to get within that bridge.
Given our limited time, I think what I'd like to do is, well, maybe we'll just jump down, Monica. We do have a couple more sections upstream of the bridge showing the change in flood level. This is facing downstream. And then downstream, the flood levels are the same. So people always ask, well, if we wind the structure, are we going to flood the downstream area? And the answer is no, like these bridges have, especially on a steeper river like Wild Branch that are that are moving around a lot and a little bit steeper. They have a pretty limited impact, it's usually locally upstream. And then there's a lot more structural detail, these are our borings that we collected below here, which I think we maybe, I don't know, Monica, unless there's like specific things we probably won't jump into, then we can open it up for discussion. I wanted to just show the budget and the BCA results.
Yeah, that's totally fine, and again, this is 30% design, so there's still a lot that needs to be flushed out to get it to be something constructable, but you get the idea with the guard rail and the end blocks. And yeah, I think it's fine, move on to the bigger picture stuff.
Okay.
BCA.
So first, we'll just jump over to the budget. The bottom line shows the construction items, and these include major, minor, and inflation. And the major items are the things we kind of know the bridge needs now, like the box beams and the guard rail. The minor items are things that we kind of think the design's going to need, but they're not in the design right now, so bolt packages and bridge seats and certain things, there's an allowance for that as well as inflation, assuming this is being built down the road. So it's a $1.75 million bridge. And then we, to get our full project budget, so we can weigh it against the benefits, we have engineering, design, and permitting to kind of complete the design process, managing the bid, and then doing some construction oversight. So it's about a $1.9 million project, given the increase in size of the structure. The good news is, there's actually a lot of mitigation benefit. You get a lot of benefit for restoring the flood plains, FEMA really values these because as we knock down that cobble bar, there's a lot more space for floods to to store and flow through the bridge. In addition, we're going to reduce the flood levels a bit. I should say, we just made an edit to the project budget, so this number's a little low. I said a second ago, it was about $1.9 million project, this says 1.75, that's just the construction cost. So that knocks down the benefit cost ratio to 1.44, which is still above one, which is the requirement to submit a hazard mitigation grant, so we're in good shape. Our coworker Jessica worked on this a lot to, with the town to get the damages in here. And we got an ecosystem benefit for that 0.28 acre floodplain restoration. So maybe we'll pause there and see if folks have some questions for us.
I guess my biggest question is, and I talked to a couple of people about the cobble bar. Would that exist on our property? And basically ebbs and flows with the river. I guess I would like to have some discussion at some point more in depth about that part of the project. Bottom line is, it's on our property, it's talking about a quarter of an acre worth of moving, whatever you said, a couple of feet worth of it. That's an area where from an aesthetic, from a buffer, from it's part of why we bought that property, it's a beautiful spot, to access that spot in order to remove material. You're going to have to go through the buffer zone, which is a deer bedding area, etc. So there's all pieces to that, so I'd like to get some more info on that. I guess, you know, I guess, I don't know if that's better at a later date or something that we don't spend time now, but to us, as it being our property, it's a big deal for us. I understand the whole scope of the project and why we're doing it, I'm all for it, I'm all for, you know, what we're doing, why we're doing it. But it is something where it affects our property pretty dramatically in a short period.
Yeah. Yeah, and I should say, we certainly there's a lot more to discuss here, like the details of this. But I guess the first thing I'd say is the intent of this bar, top of the bar removal, like the bottom of the bar will still be there. And we don't intend to remove vegetation, so the limits of the removal now, getting in there is definitely a challenge. We had two thoughts, one is, you know, could we do, come in from upstream a little bit and do some sort of stabilization on the eroding bank that you had? Or two is, we would go through like an area with saplings where we can replant them right on the way out. And we'd also, you know, nail down the property lines. I don't, I don't know exactly what your deed is, honestly, we haven't done like property research on feasibility. So like if a piece of this back piece were on your property, or we could remove that piece or and I guess the one thing I'd say is, the Wild Branch has a lot of these giant bars and a lot of them originate are excessively large, and what that leads to is the river migrating a little more than it naturally would, it's a little less stable. So this happens when you cut off a meanderbend or some of the, some of the river-road conflict spots further upstream are where you get these giant bars, because the sediment can't make the turn. And in this case, it really feels like, if you look at the sediment bars upstream and downstream of this bridge, they're way smaller downstream. So the undersized bridge, we feel is really holding the sediment up and the, and the angle at which the water is going through here. So we kind of feel like there's going to be some adjustment on the bar, and we wanted to do that maybe in a more controlled way and allow a little more flood capacity in the channel, maybe take a little pressure off the banks upstream and approaching that area. But completely understand your aesthetic concerns and there's, there's a bit more to, to kind of nail down the details on this, you know, this part of the project. I will say, this is an important piece of the project from a feasibility point of view, because like I said, there's a big benefit in FEMA's eyes to giving more flood capacity in this, this is like a small flood bench creation. So I'm not even sure if this would be fundable without a piece like this. And we actually looked up and downstream for other opportunities to do this, just so you know. So didn't find anything feasible that's directly linked to the bridge. Maybe I'll pause there, I don't know, if there's a follow-up question.
I guess if we can at some point get together, talk about it. I did look at, I actually have the deed with me, the deed, the survey for the easement. So I think most people know DRC has an easement on that part of the property. I walked it with Amanda Garland last week. I talked to Stacy Pomeroy today. And so the, the survey for these, the, etc., all have a boundary as the center of the river or the center of the channel. So I guess let's at some point just talk about what this really entails. As far as access, removal, etc. From a standpoint of the equipment and stuff that's needed to do a project like this, I don't know. Are we just friends and everything, do you need to do something like this? Where also from, there's utilities right at the corner of that, are those going to have to be moved? There's a pole that, basically one of the main poles where it runs into our lot, is that going to have to be moved as well? And from a standpoint of needing a pad or somewhere to put a crane to set, you know, pre-cast and all that kind of stuff, where is that going to be done from? The road, is it going to have to be done from one of our fields? I guess just from a construction standpoint.
It's typically done from the road, and we flipped through one of the sheets that had the detour on it. So there'd be definitely some staging in the road. And yeah, a crane will be able to to pick those beams off of a truck, turn around and lay them down.
It's pretty typical in construction to have to move the utilities and then move that, we did it up on town hill. We're going to, we're going to have to do some work over here when they replace this whole bridge. We're working on a project up here that we're going to move to the poles.
Monica, did you have an initial thought, I think the utility pole?
Yeah.
Is kind of area.
Yeah, we did take into account the pole, I'm not seeing a call out for it. But I believe I graded it so that it doesn't necessarily have to be disturbed. It could be a contractor means and methods question of, you know, their, their pros, are they going to, are they going to safely move it temporarily so they can get in there easier? Or is it a potential for a more permanent move?
Yeah.
It's probably more down the line, yeah.
It's a little off the bridge and we felt like it's right on the verge, so that it's, that will probably be a next phase of design if that utility needs to get temporarily or permanently relocated.
Thank you, Ryan, Monica. Some questions to put aside?
The only question I have is, is it going to be able to be all the work done within the confines of the right of way? Or is it going to be wider than the right of way onto adjacent properties? We already know that the, like the cobble and, you know, that will have to be removed and whether it comes down the river or onto Paul's property or not. But just for the work itself at the bridge and the road, will that project stay confined to just the right of way, or will it spill over?
That kind of goes with what Roy was saying, this is like LIDAR and like database information on here, not something that was surveyed, looking through the deeds and everything. So I'm, I think we'll at least need temporary construction easements, there's a chance that there's a little bit of permanent.
Go around the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we can put on the, like, the approximate property lines from the parcel viewer. We believe most of the work is in the right of way, and as Monica said, just there might be a corner here that, that drift over, which we probably could adapt. So, yeah.
Yeah, you can see the property lines, they're gray, another gray line on there, but.
Oh, so here's the line right here.
Yeah.
So like there's a little piece, as the plan is shown, that goes on to the other property as well as to the north here.
Yeah, and those footings, you know, under the surface will be like a little bit spread out, so to, to construct it, you definitely need to be in there. But the finished product will be pretty minimal.
Again, Monica, right, first presenting, so. So.
So this is as far as we go until we, we apply for the grant.
Yeah.
If you get the grant, we can go further with design, if we don't get approved, then there's the, instead.
Right, what is funded currently through Claywater Service Provider is just kind of finishing up preliminary design phase. And then what we're all working together now to apply for the HGP is the final. But it is, you know, I've heard from BM many times, it's definitely a priority project. Very excited, they received the hazard mitigation grant application, we're ready to submit, so it's definitely, so it's very exciting, please.
Thank you for your time. Your.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
On to the, did you have anything more to say? We're going to move on to the Lemoyle County Railroad Development Plan proposal.
Okay, I believe we presented that, or would you? All right, are you presenting that? Or would you like us, Mike and I to present it? Do you have the formal report that Tori is looking on?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well.
Oh, you have, are you presenting this portion of the, the plan, would you like?
Um, if you and Mike would be able to, I have to pull it up in front of me. Thank you.
I don't know, Tori hasn't sent us the final report, but we can talk about what we know so far.
Okay. Yeah, so I'm, I've, it's not, the grant application, still working on it, be done by this Friday. And I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
Oh, I mean, I can present it, I just didn't get the final report Tori's working on, but I do have the budget, we need to.
Okay, yeah, go over the budget. And I don't know about the final report, I will look for that though.
Final, final proposal she was working on. So essentially, we've been talking about the rail trail, the depot and filling in foundation, building depot foundation on the rail trail. Um, we're putting in for a grant. Um, it's a relative to, I believe a relative to a grant. Um, and, uh. We've met multiple times. Uh, the last time we talked, we needed to have, uh, meet with the historic preservation officer. They felt, as, as did the archaeological. Um, officer with the state, they felt that there would be no significant binding. So they got, think that we can go, go ahead and proceed. I've applied for the lease. Um, just waiting to hear for the lease for this particular segment of property that kind of triangulates. Um, around from the trail, around the, um. The base of the. Foundation and then up to that telephone utility pole and then a straight down. So it's like a triangle area. Um, and so, uh. Mike and I have been pricing out the, the cost to clear the foundation. And, uh, actually it suggested when we met with the state that we put in an EBA ramp. So that, um, because it's such an easy access from the parking lot to get to this particular. To, to this, uh, additional area, this trail side. Uh, trailhead area. And so, uh, we priced out a ramp. And so what we want to do is clear out. The, the trees, most of the trees from the actual foundation. Uh, clear out some of the trees around the foundation. So we have a clearer view of the, the office and the town. And a little bit toward the. Parking lot. Uh, and then fill in the foundation with like three quarter inch stone. About eighteen inches. Fill it in and then put up another kiosk. We did find, um, a reuse, we're going to reclaim a roof from Livermont Land Trust. So that cuts, cuts back on the cost, but it'll be a, an eight by four foot kiosk with a roof on it. On one side of the kiosk will have the maps that they're printing. We agreed to purchase two maps, one for the parking lot and one for this kiosk. And that will be the, the rail trail map. A second map will be a map of the town. Um, so that says, hey, what are some particular sites in town? And then on the other side of the kiosk, it will be, uh, uh, will cut history. So we can have all of these. Once we get, we would be responsible for that design. But then we can have that printed on the same type of steel, but a larger, a larger design. So we can figure out really what we want to talk about. If we want to talk about, we will cut. Just the, the trail and, and you know, how the, the depot became a library or whatever. That's up to us to decide. Um, and so the kiosk will sit in this particular foundation area that's been, that's been built in. And we've. We've budgeted for a couple of, uh. picnic tables and then budgeted for, uh. The, the, um, cost of the ramp and then sort of. To kind of refinish that area to get to the ramp. So it's level and then we'll see. We'll see the grass all of that. So I think it'll be, it'll be stunning. It'll catch your eye as you're biking by. Um, the, uh, Tori's worked to keep our costs at twenty percent. So our cost will be through labor. Labor and equipment. Um, I talked to the road crew and Dylan said that he can help clear it. Um, we'll get kingdom timber in. We can budget it for kingdom timber to come in and do, uh. The stumping, we'll be stumping. Um, Dylan has offered to actually do the cutting. We have volunteers to do the cutting, but we would need the road crew to fill, you know, to, to truck and fill the gravel. Spread it around and then kind of grade and make the improvements to be, to make it accessible. So we've kept it at twenty percent, our contribution in, in, um, labor and equipment.
Where, so I'm confused about where the ramp, where will people be coming from to use the ramp?
It'll be coming from the parking lot possibly or from the trailhead. I did a brief sketch of it. Okay, just a brief sketch. Why don't you have one of the new? See there, but, um, you can see where the rail trail runs and then the path off of it. Um, to get. To get the ramp to fit, it's about an eighteen inch rise. So you need eighteen feet of ramp. So you have ten feet going up to the foundation and then eight feet running along the side there and then have access in. Eight feet down. It's not set in stone.
It's not in the, in the road though.
No, 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 no. There's plenty of room to access that. And then this is what they're waiting. Like one of the maps they're doing is we've, uh, created for. Kind of looks like that. And then the second map will be one, a different one of the town. So we just need, uh, I just need basically what I need to see your signature on. Two portions of the grants that you can get it applied. Let's do this one Friday.
Do you have any other questions about the, what they're doing, their rep?
That's the only one. Pardon?
I asked the board if they had any questions for you. Well, it's nice. Thank you.
Connor, do you have anything to add?
Um, nothing at the moment. Again, just working on the grant application with Tori. Um, that should be done by Friday. And we will be working with, to make the, um. The LVRT map. We're working, I think with V-Trans. Um, they have a standardized version, which, um. That, you know, they have their own guidelines they want to use and that will be on one side of the kiosk.
And that's the standard map that goes on, on every trailhead basically?
Yes, um. I, well, it's taken a while to, to load, but I have an example map, um, for, for Cambridge, if you'd like to see that. It's just, yeah, it's, it takes a few minutes for it to load, so.
Looks like the project has seen a cost roughly thirteen thousand, maybe a little bit more, more. And, um, our contribution would be where we're going to keeping it definitely at about twenty five, so.
All right. Doesn't look like my computer's cooperating. So, um, I, I can just forward, like email to you, um, a copy of the map.
Do you want to go to that cover? Fields?
Yeah.
It's in Cambridge, yeah?
It's in, it's in John, it's something like.
It's, uh, ten by. You get it here or you could. It's something like that.
It's the kiosk that we're, it's our ones.
The cost, recycling it from another. Yeah, let's see, it was about time. And then wanting to build it.
We just need a volunteer to pick up or two to go and pick it up.
Let's coordinate later. I'm running out of trailer.
Okay.
I'll bring it up.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you so much for giving that. And we'll move on to our budget here and.
I think I answered all your questions, the listeners question. Four times a charm. I put them in front of you. The Lindy would ask. You'd ask them about the reappraisal information. So the budget reflects an estimate of time on materials. Uh, town appraisal that begins July first, September twenty twenty five. Um, majority of their work will be in the office communication. Uh, so our listeners, the majority of their work will be in the office, um, serving communication for residents. The reappraisal cost, the design equipment is one thousand, one hundred thousand, one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Um, roughly four hundred, sorry, four thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars over twenty four months. That begins July. First is, uh, twenty twenty five. The current funds in the town appraisal, we have one hundred and six thousand, one hundred and sixty eight dollars earning sixty, or thirty dollars a month of interest. And in March, we'll get in another ninety five hundred. So we will have enough in the account to cover the costs of the appraisal. Um, and then I inserted the timeline on your sheet. So the timeline would be, uh. July twenty twenty five, April twenty seven is data collection and data, data entry. And then April to May of twenty seven is the field review. May of twenty seven is the final review. May of twenty seven and pre hearings and June twenty seven is the lodge grant listing grievance hearing. So that better explains the budget of thirty four, uh, thousand, four hundred and sixty five dollars. Even one we have on the. Is that, oh, is this one only says thirty one, three twenty one? Do you have any more? Okay. This is pending. We'll save this in seventy five hundred. That's the one I gave you, not on this page, but in the other budgets.
Linda, can we use money in that account for the appraisal for the listeners to do the appraisal? Now, the only thing that it can be used for is the reappraisal and also for training. That's it. So what about the other money? That they have.
They have two accounts.
Yes, they do.
Now they, well, they are sent to different funds of money.
Right, nine hundred and fifty dollars plus eight thousand and something. And they put it, we put it all together into that account. And they have, that other money is for training.
It's that other money is not, is for maintaining the grand list.
Right, well, and but. Not just training. Tom and Liz, uh, Deb, I.
Let you say whatever they want.
Okay, they just said they were going to use it for training. That's all I know.
All that money, eight thousand and?
No, 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 no. The thousand, the nine hundred and fifty. We get one dollar per parcel.
Right.
For maintaining the grain list and then we get a certain amount to, for reappraisal.
Right.
And we have a hundred and six and we'll get another eight to nine grants, um, coming in April. Just before they start the reappraisal.
But how are they using the money, the dollar?
They have it.
Right. It needs to be divided out and, and that, to me, that would be maintaining the grand list.
But then that might not pay for, you might not have enough money in there then for the reappraisal.
Right.
Yeah, because it's big combined.
Right, so there's going to be about, um. What do you say? Seven thousand now?
It's like, uh.
It's going to be seven thousand five hundred basically left.
And we could always use that towards their salary.
For that, for to get a, I mean, that would be kind of being maintaining the grand list by doing the data and bringing it up to the.
And you could put that in the revenue. I mean, you'd still show the budget for it out, but you'd also show a revenue to offset something.
So do you anticipate, uh, this, uh?
Oh, I see what I did.
Reappraisal contract changing? Um, have any additional things?
When I talked to number, they were, the only thing they stressed is that at the same time that they're going to be doing this reappraisal. The listeners have to do their own grand list for two thousand and twenty six. Because they're not coming out with any new reprising until two thousand twenty seven.
So I have on this sheet two estimated, so we increase, um, the lead listener's hours. Then it increases to twenty thousand to this, this particular amount. Plus, so the, the amount that's found on, under salary on this sheet. Is, um, talking about if we increase the two hours per week. The, uh, but that is not reflected on this sheet. There are two scenarios.
This large increase is only increasing the two hours a week?
It's increasing the lead two hours a week and it's giving the, the, uh. New lead point listener, because we had said, I'm after three to six month probation. Once they run again, if we would increase. It said that one's higher. So there's either an increase in the salary or a three percent. I mean, it's, it's a calculated both ways, but not both. It's not an increase in salary then if we will. The lead listener was, I, I projected a three percent plus the two hours of.
So you're saying that the assistant will either get. An increase in salary or a three percent.
To you guys to, to determine. And those totals are broken out on this sheet here. I have that contract. Through the reappraisal agreement here if you guys can receive it.
I was just wondering if, if this is the price. There might be any add-ons in there or something.
It is if it goes to the state. If it goes past grievance, it goes past the. If it goes past grievance, goes past the DCA, in order for us to bring them into the state, it's like a hundred and something an hour. But I don't think we're going that far.
Well, it'd be another year where we would have.
Yes.
More money.
Right, and you also have to understand that this is gonna be over two years.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah. In the meantime, you're gonna make money, um, interest on this account that you do every month.
Couple thirty dollars.
Yeah.
Uh, it's right up here. Um, so far this year, uh, not through the December, but it's a hundred and fifty-six dollars we've earned, so yeah.
Any more questions?
Just wanna make sure that I'm understanding, I'm keeping up. We have a price of, let's call it a hundred and nine. We have about a hundred and six. We're receiving ninety-five. After everything's all paid for, that leaves us around, right, estimating here seven thousand dollars. Listener's budget goes up eighty-three thirty-six according to the sheet. Minus that seven thousand leaves us in the ballpark of a two thousand dollar increase. And that's, I'm understanding correctly.
And that's bidding really, if you agree to the increase.
Yeah, as proposed.
And two hours.
And one more, making sure I'm keeping up. That means the listener's office gets a total of four more hours to per.
No, just, just the lead listener that built you this.
I see.
So they might come in an hour earlier or something, we should. Again, we're these two minutes down.
Do you wanna plug that into the budget for now? I mean, it's not the if we've agreed to it, but we understand it better.
I'm in the budget.
Okay. I know, maybe now to consider, we have about sixty-seven hundred dollars we could maybe add to revenue. Could be up to seven with interest, just so. Interest rates come down and maybe I, interest rate.
So you're gonna put the thirty-four, four, six, five into this budget over here?
Yeah, but it's just a whole big place. It's not, it's, we haven't voted on it. We're just gonna fill it in for now. We understand better, but we're also gonna add sixty-seven hundred dollars to revenue to offset it. We still need to decide whether we're going to give the second listener a bump up his salary to, what, what was it that he would say when he worked, was twenty dollars an hour? After he's re-elected in March, or whatever percentage increase employees would get in July.
Eight hundred dollar difference. If you either increase it, um, it would be eleven thousand, seven sixty, seven hundred sixty dollars. If you do a three percent increase, it's ten thousand, nine hundred, two dollars.
All right, you wanna start working on the select board's budget? What I thought we'd do is we'd fill it all out tonight as much as we can, then if there's questions, we have till the next meeting to find that out. Get a different price, um, Michelle, the filling, everything. Belinda has some sections to fill in. And we'll figure out, uh, kind of like what, what the total is and what the tax rate's gonna be to discuss at our daily meeting. And that's when we can decide what we're gonna accept and what we're gonna. When we have it all together, does that sound like a plan? They have, we have to fill it all in so they can figure that out. Okay.
Wanna start with Deb?
I'm willing.
Well, you can just fill that in. We don't need to extend the meeting during that, do we?
No, but, uh, the interest LOC, I'm going to keep it the same. Um, and this will be our last year on the, um, fire truck, so of the day forward by the end of two thousand twenty-six. Yeah, we never, I hope they don't want a new one. I'm just saying. Plus in the piece, that's gonna be the same, five point five in the elections. Uh, election officials, I wanna down that back to the four hundred, because actually next year, unless my school vote or my town vote doesn't pass, I'm only going to have one election, which is town meeting. And to be honest, I wanna put it at four hundred. If I go over a little, I don't think it's a big deal, like tiny type of logic jump. Tabulator, I wanna take out the zero. I'm not planning on using the tabulator at all next year. Now, the emergency management, um, we actually have this year used six hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-five cents. We have another nine hundred dollar bill, is that right, Michelle, coming from?
Yeah, from the generator came from emergency man.
Yeah.
And nor did Jim Rock. So when I talked to him.
Oh, you're wrong.
No, I'm sorry.
Steve President.
Yeah, I talked to him, and he said, just keep it as is. I haven't used anything yet. Um, wasn't aware that we pulled the generator, we built the generator to that.
So I have a big question here, because the farm store did this, are we going to have them do the maintenance each year instead of?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So they might be a little cheaper. I don't know. Maybe you might want it down.
All right, so that's a question, so we can find out, yeah, next meeting. Or annual maintenance cost could be the short game.
I think I got on the page for the generator. Me, I took it, you're looking for that in.
But I just wanted to address those two issues with that, Deb.
So in the past, it was primarily the generator that was funded for the thousand dollars.
Yes. Because we haven't had any other expenses.
We went to insurance.
Yes.
Know that.
I just purely got some figures, and I'd have to take out the fire department and put in ours, but I do, will tell you the work is top weather.
So that's the one that's such as many insurance.
The audit also, I just talked to him about the single audit, RH and RO, and they won't have something to us by the eighth for fund balance. Got that in writing today, and, not in writing, but in the meeting. Um, and, uh, so it could be sixteen, but I'm not sure.
That's fine with that. Will they tell us?
Yes, they will, yeah. Well, they want a three-year contract, and I wanna see how they do on the single audit, so I only wanna do one year. If we're negotiating. Let's put it that way.
So the county tax, they haven't finalized that yet. That one's like the last thing.
Flags would stay the same, leased land.
Always, but if the bus farm or whatever.
It's about sixteen fifty-nine month. It's twelve months. Yeah, so far this year, we spent eighty-three ninety, and that's through, um, December, so that's actually half. So it looks like we might want to bump it up to a hundred and eighty, but you don't have to, it might go down, I mean, we never know.
Electric doesn't use it, go down. Are we gonna use more because they're using it for their athlete?
No. The only story things there, as far as I know. I don't mean, is, is there any electricity here there? I mean, I don't even think the.
Or is no electricity. Oh, well, aren't we just paying for the?
Hook up.
For it to be there.
Yeah.
But we don't have any, we don't use it.
Yes, here's a meter there, that's all I know. I think we've always paid for it.
We pay the minimum charge, and that may be something worth thinking about, whether we should continue to do that or not, um.
Can you run it from there? I don't feel like, please run it to the building.
There's no plug on the pole. They used to have the bus bars in there, and they, they had them, uh, connected to heaters, but they're in there.
Yeah, well, that used to rent it from us.
But I don't believe there's any electricity inside the building that I know of.
Before we discontinue, I would like to see, you know, what we may use the building for.
Yeah.
Mostly because if we haven't pulled the meter, they may not re-energize that without a substantial amount. That might provide a pension, sixteen dollars.
Yeah, we've been paying that for at least one, at least.
Can we just see the building? It's like, my concern when I walk by it is I don't know, there are camp trailers for campers parked right next to it. That's steep walls. And, and.
I think that's approaching almost.
It's leaning this way though, and if, if it fails, it's gonna go right onto those campers, and I don't know the liability if we've been silent for those. So inside, there are rods holding that thing together. I don't know if it's been in there, but there are rods.
It's been a while that I've wandered around yet.
And if you look at it, um, I've looked at it a number of times, that a good portion of that is in a kind of floodplain. It comes out of, from the back.
And what do we use, I mean, what do we use in the building portion?
It's a good place to throw the stuff we don't want.
I mean, we should either.
There's a lot of emails in there for a while.
We should either look at shoring it up so that we can use it to put our three hundred and sixty thousand dollar radiator in the winter. And we should have power, so have the block here, or we should think about decommissioning the building. Are we leasing the land that it's on?
No.
No.
We own it.
What if we covered the building, that could be.
I thought we used the store, um, stuff in there. We, well, at one time, they stored a fire truck in there that they, when they were, before they created a bay, another bay, and then we stored the trailer, uh, the radiator in there when Skip was foreman.
Last I heard, the reason we don't do that is the condition of the building.
Yeah.
The radiator is safer outside.
Oh, yes. I know when I was on the slate board, we talked about either tearing it down and replacing it with another, uh, building, and I think we had Baker, he must have quoted, and it was outrageous. And, um, uh, no decision was made back then, and we thought it was gonna fall down then, so that's been numerous years.
And that's.
Yeah.
Sustainable, yeah.
Well, on the bottom, it erodes out that, some of the dirt, but those piers are in pretty far down.
Would it, would it be when I'm looking at the cost of what needs repairs long-term, maybe?
I, if that's something the board is interested in, I would be willing to wander around out there and give a quasi-perfusal opinion. Whether or not the building could be salvaged.
It's got like that weatherboard stuff on it, you know, well, it's weather, definitely western.
Well, weatherboard, don't it?
Yes, yeah.
If, you know, I, I wouldn't say it's a rush thing, but it would totally be worth our knowing, um, you know, if there's a liability at some point when it's Sunday and you're over there.
Yeah.
And if we, we, um, a twenty by eight cargo container in there for the athletic association.
The other thing is if you do take it down, it would make more parking for this rail trail, just so you think about that.
And can I get, um, at some point before we're there, can I get a copy of whatever deed or, uh, bearings for that, just because if, if there is somebody encroaching looking for any terms payout when the building takes their campers out?
Yeah, it's, it's clearly on the map we have.
It sits pretty tight on that lot though. And I will say that I don't think if we, since twenty-five, I think if we replaced it, we'd have to make it much smaller.
Or pick us for a variance?
And when we decide about the bus selection.
I think you go look into if, have Michael look and see if he has electricity there, and if we.
Run it at this point, but.
We'll pay for this year.
Yeah, so I think it might be worth.
It's worth, just worth looking at when you go so.
Especially when they wanna charge you a thousand dollars to connect and reconnect. That's, that's my fear, is that if we discontinue and they pull that service, what would it cost us to get power there again? An interesting question for Brian, if, I guess, who registered me, but sixteen dollars.
Same, just to be in the one seventy-five. I still have to weigh, what did you say about flags?
Uh, saying three hundred is good, and so is leased land for fifty-nine. I don't know if those three will ever be released, but so far they haven't.
Probably up to us to do that.
Probably.
Moment.
Oh, I have a contract to twenty-six point seven, so that's good.
And, and we, he actually didn't charge us the whole amount this year, but I'm assuming it's because it's gonna be in April, May, June. Because we have fourteen hundred left in there.
How much is it, forty-five?
Thirty-six.
Streetlights, those are fixed.
Yeah, they are.
And the tourlet, I've got a college, we're paying for ninety a month, um, but if we do ADA, we've needed ADA tour, tourlet, and I don't, you know, I don't think the one that we were renting before is ADA. But I think maybe Cesseller or Michonne's might hopefully get it cheaper.
We have pockets, we did, um, and it is not, I mean, if it's one who up at the transfer station, you have to step up. It's, there's no reason.
And not big enough.
All right, so that's another thing for you to come back with us tomorrow.
I would like to visit the litter committee, I know it says four grand there, but I really wanna talk about this. We don't have all day and at least nobody's taken it over, and we do not have the ritter cleanup. I just moved it up because um, at some point I think we talked and you said you'd like to, uh, green up there. Just put it there. I'm like the down next to two. Unless we're gonna go back to all day, but I don't really think we have anybody running the litter committee right now.
No, no.
Until somebody volunteers. I've asked people to.
Absolutely.
Cover green up there.
Absolutely. And I'm thinking more like between fifteen and sixteen, but I know you don't like to, we're down too low.
But I don't like raising money we don't need.
Then give it sixteen.
So can we take the whole uh, litter committee thing out and just put green up there?
Absolutely.
For the heading.
And did you decide on fifteen or two?
Sixteen.
And we're gonna have to find somebody to run green up this year, you know.
Is that the?
No, he has. Totally told me no. Last year it was just the rope moving on.
So we need to uh, maybe start advertising for someone who might be interested in doing that.
Put it the outplace for the transfer stations to make a contribution, a donation for a budget to cover green up day.
So here's what I want to do. Yeah, here's what I want to do. Anything over that amount would come out of the transfer station, and I want you to take out in, under town office and town hall where we pay for our garbage to go. I mean, the town garage doesn't, and they put it up there, and the library doesn't, so you know, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't think the transfer station needs.
Put that in there in the days when the transfer station wasn't doing that properly. Well, yeah, so how much are we?
It's five hundred, I think, is on.
How much do we have in uh, balance in the transfer station?
Oh, totally none.
All right, so we're not even, they're gonna make a contribution.
Okay, we can.
Providing this down.
Transfer station, I say we can add it into that budget if you want. I don't have a problem with that.
I think you're gonna have to change the judge of the transfer station.
And I'll bring you the rebuts. Okay, so just take that whole committee right out.
Yeah.
Wait, so no green up?
No.
No, nothing.
Transfer station.
That whole department is gone, like it never happened. It was never here.
Be, be.
Payroll taxes, I won't know until you guys decide on raises. And retirement too. My only question, uh, I know you have it in your legal services, uh, for twenty-five hundred. I just need to know wastewater and everything, is that all coming under the grant? Setting up these, once we're equipped, I don't know, I know two thousand twenty-six, but is it after July first, two thousand twenty-six? That we might be billing, do we have to set up rules and regulations around the wastewater and flushing things and stuff, and we need warnings for that? But that's my only concern there.
So right now we're working actively on an ordinance and bylaws and to set up a sewer commissioner um, to present to the select board, um, first, we need to.
Okay. Um, that I didn't ever need.
Just asking a question. Um. Legal services within the.
Under select one.
Select board. You never know.
Okay.
You never know, it, it could be someone suing us, I don't know. Um.
That's the only area I'm concerned about, and I don't know if you're going to, if the wastewater is going to be under the select board budget, or is it gonna be run as a deferent?
It's gonna be just like the water system.
Okay. Well, that's, but the water system is in here.
The school's third water system, what, what do we have to take for them? Repairs. But the users should be paying for the repairs.
Well, they do, but what I'm saying is it's in your general fund that we have on QuickBooks, so you have income coming in and you have expense going out. It's not in the select board's budget, but it is in the general fund for the town.
It's supposed to be a separate enterprise, just like the transfer station.
Do you want us to set it up that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
All right, we'll do that.
And so that, so, so long the wastewater will be a separate enterprise, and they will need to, um, charge the fees to run.
Okay.
I'm not saying that they might, in the beginning, borrow money. Um. A little bit of money now and then, but they'll um, need setting up a reserve fund. I don't have to build up for repairs and so forth.
Okay, we'll change that over then.
So when we redo this, can you put the town park treasures up on the top?
Yep. You can do that.
How are we doing with fuel these days? This is, we have money to go over.
We do, so all of you guys have your assigned fund balances here. Um, last year we dipped into it a little bit, um, but we have left sixteen thousand nine fifty-two point eighty-nine. So. I am per, well, I'm not proposing, I'm suggesting that under town hall for fuel, you've only used, of course, it hasn't been used that much. I don't know if when the valet comes back in, it might go up a little, but you've only used six hundred and twenty-three dollars through December. And we put in three thousand. So I would like to go down to fifteen hundred, and then if it does go over, it can come out of this fund balance. I also, we're not using as much electricity, but like I said, the second half of this uh, year, the valet will be in there, so I'm not sure, and they are planning on next year too, right, Linda being in there? Who else? But I would like to take out the town hall garbage disposal, trash removal. Under that one in the town office. And then they'll save you eight hundred dollars. I know it's not much, but everyone gets it.
Looking at the fund balance, what's the, it's cut off, uh, what's the heading, the old schoolhouse?
So that is the old schoolhouse reserve fund, or fund, I guess you should say, and the reason it's in there is you guys made a motion.
That's the pay for brand, that's the brand, but it hasn't been finished.
Right, that's correct. You guys in.
Yeah.
End of June, I got all of this.
Yeah.
And I set them all up.
So that should be uh, closing up shortly.
Right. I wanna take this library out because I don't think it should be in this fund balance because they're a whole separate trustee. It's actually, was their CD, it's much less. So I really, if you guys don't mind, I'm gonna take that off the assigned balance, because it's not like we have any sale.
Brian, I would.
Okay.
So let's go back to the town hall fuel, you, you, you're suggesting are.
Fifteen, half of what it is. We've only spent six hundred. And it might be because we have a good price on propane, and it might be because also we haven't used it as much.
But what's that gonna do for next year? Does this one start to?
Well, propane is, we're, we're capped in at a dollar ninety-nine, I think it is, for three years, so that's a whole nother year.
So you think we're saving money because it's the propane?
Yes, I do. I think it's heating it a lot better. I went in there the other day and I was hot, and that's amazing.
All right. What's the rest of the board? Feel about that.
Because you also have it in your fund balance too, if it goes over.
Yeah.
And next year there'll be a better idea.
Yeah.
You said Jenny.
That's right. Because you've had, haven't had propane that long.
Maybe put a new system in there, maybe start from sets. I'd say it was the muscle.
Put the electrics down a little bit.
Mm-hmm. Well, that's because there's not been a lot of people in there late at night. Michael, I mean, it's one of your names.
Yeah, I suppose.
What do you want electrical? Are we down it to twelve? I mean, you've only used five hundred this year so far.
You need to spell electric right.
Nice.
Supplies.
Oh, gotta leave that at two thousand. Oh, and not that, I mean, that's the town.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, free fifty.
And the janitor, eighteen.
I don't. See, depends on you.
People wanting to use it, like.
Yeah.
Call me constantly.
So I paid, I have paid him through December twenty-fifth, yeah, that's his next one, but he only has four or five hours up there, so.
What does it do with valet once a week?
Yeah, we only do once a week.
Once a week.
They have to take care of themselves out there. To get a good money.
I think I would leave it.
Yeah, okay. Right, town hall, those fuel.
I wanna down that considerably, down to two grand. You know what we spent this year so far? Three hundred and sixty-three dollars. I mean, really. It's not that we're freezing, well, Michelle has, but we haven't had a video.
She's freezing, she has a hot room.
That's what I said. Days. When I don't move. The electric too, I don't know. Do we have better lights? Are we not turning on as many lights at night or something? Because we've only spent nine hundred out of twenty-five hundred.
I think we got scared when the price went up a couple years ago. And we just like, don't have our budget. Remember, we put forty thousand in there. It's because the prices went up, and so I think we got scared.
Yeah, town office maintenance supplies, I do need.
Well, let's just wait, we got fuel at two thousand, a janitor.
We'd the same.
Electric.
I would down it to around eighteen hundred. I paid six months and it was nine hundred dollars.
Supplies.
That I wanted to, Brad. These new janitors, there's so many things.
You spent so much time going in the right direction and just.
Yeah, I know, I'm so sorry. Well, we've already spent nineteen hundred and seventy-one dollars on supply. And I wanna know about the floor.
Well, maybe it should be twenty-five.
I don't wanna go up.
Well, I wanna be realistic.
Okay, do twenty-five since we're taking out garbage.
It's because, you know, it pays for all the, all the paper, tissues, everything, I mean, the garage uses it, the town hall uses it.
And I'm wondering about the floor for next year too, because we didn't do it this year.
Floor.
No, not floor, that would be.
Ugly, is it ugly? I mean, because you have the Marley down.
No, I don't think we can do it just to wait a certain number of years.
Is that under a special project or under town hall still?
It just comes out of the building and it's.
Yep. So what was our fund balance last?
This year.
We get a tiny bit, because. The ones that was different.
Start your new brand then. Start somewhere. Start the, I don't know, what's that, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-eight thousand and a hundred? Where are you? Where's our last page?
Well, we, oh, yeah, so our funds, we had forty grand last year, and this year we won't have any since we've moved it all over. Fund balance total was fifty thousand last year. I don't know what you want me to share, it depends upon having your budget set.
And uh, why does this business, um, assign fund balance twenty-four, twenty-four?
It should be twenty-four, twenty-five, and this is what the, um.
Twenty-eight, nine.
Uh, Billings amended the motion to moving twenty-thousand, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred to general funds for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five.
All right, so we can at least have that in there.
Yes. Even though it'll be twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, we can move it again.
So wait a minute, did we, when did we make that person?
End of June. June nineteenth. You wanna see?
Well, no, I, I think that uh, if it was meant for, did we use it, or was it meant for twenty-five, twenty-six?
I don't know. We moved seven, but you know, we took that hundred and twenty-four thousand and we split it all up. Remember?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wonder if the years were different, so have we put it against our budget?
He's a busy minute, so I don't know, because I can't contact it. But schoolhouse engineer was seven thousand thirty-nine dollars and ten cents, municipal planning grant was two thousand and eight dollars, town court purchase was twenty-five thousand. Um, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five taxes, forty grand. Possible parking area by post office was thirty thousand, and the brick grant was sixty-five hundred, and the wastewater was twenty-five thousand. And then Billings amended the motion to moving twenty-eight thousand nine hundred to the general funds, and ten thousand to new line item grant matching. In secondary by Mary.
If you're going to put a bigger company grant matching to your new one.
Yeah. So your 40,000 then went down to 28, 9 and then 10,000 went into, um, new line item grant matching.
So where are we? No, it's just there in case we need to have that.
In other words, if your budget went over, you could say you can take it out of your fund balance of 28,000. But we won't know until June. Now, um, well, I guess you could use it now. You could move it from fund balance into regular.
I mean, can, do we need it in the budget right now? Is that what you meant it for in the current?
No, we were just putting it in there so we had it. We didn't have it in the other general.
Not in the last year, so you mean, it's from 23 to 24. That's what, you were moving it into a safe place so you could use it in the future.
Yeah, we were allocated half of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm seeing whatever.
See, we would see.
So if we need, if we find we don't have a fund balance. From the others, we could use it for, to lower the times.
Well, I hope we have.
Well, I don't know with all the flooding, it's, it's hard to tell, it gets confusing.
Now, in this year, you know, you guys received $2,000 back from up on Town Hill. Remember we gave, gave Harvard the lecture? I don't know how to size, how, I put it back into the, you know, but FEMA paid us a whole amount. You know what I'm saying? So there's 2 grand there and then.
What the truth is right now, we are, no, they didn't pay us for that.
Oh, they have it, okay.
No, because right now we are, Lucian had to go up and take pictures today.
That's right.
Yes, we have to add those, that electrical stuff, so they have to amend that project.
I see, okay. And then you got 6,200 that came from the hybrid coalition that's just sitting there.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Okay. And that's not in the fund balance, just so you.
So can I put some? Reply in the ointment?
Yeah.
When I went to the, the Royal County Sheriff's Department, I was talking with Roger. Patrol hours are not their high priority. So if there's any other criminal activity or whatever happening. They do not do patrol hours.
Because they don't have any manpower.
No manpower, but with a 3% increase. I would like to see the. Patrol. Separate it out from our. Budget.
So you'd like it back in the morning?
Back in the morning. Because if we're not going to get refunded for those hours.
Do we get paid? Do we pay for hours or just a percentage of time? I thought that's what the deal was, the deal is. Like 17%.
Yeah, we just give them 17% and give what we give. Where, we're already covered by the. Month state police. So even if you call 911, someone will show up. No matter what. You may not get any patrol hours, but you will have criminal.
It might be three days later though.
I know, but Eden, Eden does not pay for patrol hours and you can wait forever. It's not up immediately.
I know.
Well, if there's, if there is a crime happening, they have to send someone.
You can wait. And safe patrols take hours and they're coming from so far away, it takes, where I don't.
They're in Morse code.
No, they won't know. They're not there anymore.
Without Morse code.
We have a brand new facility in Williston, right up the hill on the left.
No, no longer, they don't have a satellite or whatever in Morse code anymore than they did for a while.
Takes, I, I know personally, it takes. You just don't get sort of, I think that Wilka is fortunate to have to pay patrol.
I don't mind putting it in the warning. I mean, it's up to the voters. I, I was very surprised when we had COVID and everyone got mailed the ballot and it was a separate article. You know, everyone wanted it, um, but. I mean, if the rest of the board wants it back in the warning, I got a lot of complaints. I got complaints either way.
Yeah, you did.
You know, complaints, why isn't it separated in the warning and why isn't it just in the budget?
So.
Mine is everybody's calling up. I have no one showing up stopping the speakers.
Looking through the reports that we've been getting, monthly, quarterly, the percentage of targeted patrols to tickets that they issue, I mean, this is a really high revenue.
This is a high one for November.
Yeah.
So just to talk about judicial funds, we set a $4,000 that we'll get this year. We've already received $3,974. And we're only halfway through the year. So they are picking up people, but maybe not as much as they should.
I was just gonna say, this month it was 12 patrols and seven tickets, I think is what I read.
Yeah.
Last month it was, I've just been kind of tracking the trend line. It seems like they're, they're in the 50 to 60% targeted versus what they're giving people for. Which was higher than I expected it to be. Because, you're right, I also received some complaints about lack of enforcement, but.
The other thing I asked Roger about is why don't they put up unmanned monitoring ticket stations? He goes, well, we can't take photos. And I said, what's the difference between the business having a security system? They're taking your photo and using it to catch them as a crime.
States statute, you can't issue a ticket. Uh, so in like, in New York, they can set a cop on a bridge, run radar and have another officer issue it. State of the Mon can't do that.
No, no. In Texas, we have a vehicle.
Yeah.
With a.
But you can't.
It takes a picture of it. And I said, why don't you do that?
There's states that you, they can't, they can't issue tickets.
Well, and that's why I'm trying to go and get hold of somebody, the legislator and say, get it changed, it's stupid.
Didn't they get sued by someone about that?
Uh, back when they first came out, plate readers that they were putting on state, uh, police cars and that's why no one has, actually, I think it was South Carolina. That somebody got sued for anything. Sounds like around, but.
Me, it makes sense.
Well, those, those little radar boxes with the flashing lights and however obnoxious those are, there are studies that show that those do do some calming effects. You know, we could maybe look for a grant that would let us co-locate some radar signs on either end of the village that would do flashing both in Wilka and in North Wilka. I don't know if there's any kind of funding opportunities for that, but. Which is, it's just, the goal is to slow people down, turn them into all of them, help. Studies show that it's a more cost-effective way to.
I mean, north, uh, hardy chasm.
Yep.
And it does seem to slow them down.
That's very, as you enter, has the.
The lights, it looks like. Yeah. Yeah. There's some by the Willie store too.
So let's move on. So what does the board feel about putting it in the warning and?
To me, it makes no difference. If they didn't want it, if it were in the budget and they didn't want it, they just vote no on our budget. Your budget. But then just. It's the difference here, if you have to list them separately or together. Like you said, people are going to be unhappy either way.
How about you?
So how much do you feel, I mean, you willing to make a motion to put it in the budget, or put it in the warning?
I would like to put it separate.
And second?
Can you leave us that option?
Motion to separate out the sheriff's patrol. In the warning.
Usually we put, um, communication with it too.
Second, I'll take it as a motion. I feel that the communication is needed. We have so much invested in that system. We lose it for our fire department. That's why I'd rather just leave that in the. Fund budget.
All right, so we have a motion, fine, a second, to include the sheriff's budget in the warning this year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so Karen. I did a draft budget here, um, because I did the draft, I don't know why it came so near.
I know it was, I just printed it like that and I said, maybe I should have gone in and done some work. Didn't you have a newer version than I do? I may have, I'm afraid my word documents.
The ones, the service agency, they're just the ones that have a share petition and you have to keep track of that. But I've added, um, an article that the voters shall authorize the town court to receive a salary in lieu of fees.
Yeah, my question, does it have to say town clerk slash salary? Exchanger?
Um, no, I think the translator, those are the.
It's a salary.
Okay.
Okay, that's what my question.
So we've been in discussions with Belinda. Uh, there's probably only four towns left in the state of Vermont where part of their salary is fees. This way, um, they add some stability to, um, for salary each year and then, um, also. So all the fees that she collects will go into the general fund. That is something that voters that will authorize. And then the other thing is shall the voters authorize the slipboard to enter into an agreement with Northern Rivers Land Trust to place a conservation easement on a nine acre parcel of land owned by the town leading the Bensaw. I'll add the sheriff's. The rest of the stuff is also, um, is how we pay taxes, when we pay taxes. And then we, we get the. Total, fill those in for the voters and. With the petition, these are the people that will be elected by ballot this year.
You don't want to put on to transact any other business, Belinda? If you guys have some things, I'm just asking.
Business.
Or any other non-bidging business, it's what it is. If you guys want to talk about something that might come up before town meeting, that needs to be done. Usually they thank people and stuff like that. If they need to.
So if you think of any other things that we need to put on there, let me know. Those are the two things I can remember.
Those board seats are up.
Already got their petition, we have to, sorry. Alan and Richard. Alan was very proactive. And Richard was right behind you. Thanks, thank you. Now, for the revenues, Linda, um, do you want me to, for the next meeting, pencil them in red and then we'll discuss them then? You want to?
Well, we don't really need to discuss them because you know what, what.
Okay.
What's coming in.
Okay. Okay, so I can put them in and then if you have any questions, we can. Okay.
We'll review it.
All right, no problem.
Project manager's report. Does anyone else have anything else on the budget they want to say? Any questions they have? Anything they'd like to add? Takeaways?
I have some, I have some questions about highway budget and like forest committee website fund in our. Uh, and the website fund in our IT department, but I don't, I mean, none of those are really. I can reach out to Michelle and maybe those, those fires, I want to take up a board.
Yeah, so next time I anticipate on January 8th, and that we will dig into. But if you have questions on what they need or what it's paying for, ask, find out now.
And you know, in January, I'll give you another thing about what we have.
What we print the numbers on January.
That's the do or die, I think.
Yes. So Curtis just saying that, um, there's really no significant change in status, he's, uh. He's backfilling the Town Hill project to include the utility tolls. Minor submissions of, for the town hall. I guess they kind of did it wrong. They had GPS for the town office, not the town hall. Um, so it's nearing the end. He also has to break out. Uh, the 14 roads that were lumped together, now he needs to break them out.
That was a specialty of something. I was worried that move to 24, that we're going to start lumping things.
Well, we always lump them and they always lump them. I thought it was weird. Uh, they lumped all the roads together. Um, they lumped them again here, but next, um. He's saying that the, there's a reporting policy change from the combined reporting in place for over a year now. So then he, now he has to break them out.
Yeah, I'll tell you this. I'll tell you.
Any reason?
Because yes, that was never.
We just got too much time on our hands, so they were in a corner office.
I think now.
They go spend more time.
And the guy says, no, 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 don't, I was like, only valet does. I said, no, you don't know. He said that. Oh, partly all of them, like, talk people, he was talking about the flooding and what, where the flooding happened in 23, which I didn't. So I understand that the phone, it's like, no, you should tell them.
No, it wasn't. I said. I said it was the town hall, it's over 115. Well, we have you at 28 Road Street. I don't think so. And then you have to tell me 4176 was owned by the valet. No, it's not. They are housed there, but they do not own.
They rent.
Yeah, we had a big discussion.
They're not housed, they're rented. I don't think those little girls stayed at 24, sorry.
Well, he said, Google says, what the valet?
I find all the time, I get stuff where, what happened? Because the dishes, like Google's off filing.
Think, isn't probably the one that came here? You seen it? So you raised Michelle?
Okay, I got a lot to talk about. I want to talk about the handyman position. We've had a lot of people, we haven't even advertised it. I think I've had four people coming to me saying, I'm just going to position. I said, we haven't advertised it and you don't know that we're going to actually hire for a 20 hour or a 10 hour week position. I would like to formalize this with the board. I would recommend that, uh, we just, as we discussed, keep the $20,000 budget. the twenty thousand dollar budget, ten thousand for materials and projects, and then ten thousand for labor as an on-call. Uh, we can, we can certainly hire people per project rather than someone sitting in the office and, and maybe find one for them or not. Um, that's what I would like to do with that position moving forward in the special year and moving forward.
Play it by ear and see how it goes.
Well, if, if we do need something done like on-call, if we need the nine eleven signs installed, um, so I am saving the money that we are saving from the handyman position now so that we can contract that out in the spring. But I think I'd like to have just permission to use one person if, if that person is qualified. Don't know for on-call. Unless it's a bigger project, we have to put it out to our.
For like repairs.
Yes, repairs, yes.
Not for shoveling, you know, all that's.
Oh, that's already covered, yeah. So it's just for the, the repairs that we may need or like the nine on one side.
You have someone who wants?
Yes.
Qualified?
Yes. And she.
How does that play with our purchasing policy? In terms of?
The on-call, so I don't know if that would have to be put out in our P for at the ready, or if it's just on-call maintenance person.
Oh, so we would have, I see, if, rather than having it in our P, we would essentially contract for an on-call. He would guarantee, the, the person would guarantee, you know, within five days of, of notification, we have service or something like that.
Would just be planned, yeah.
So the purchasing policy doesn't apply.
I don't think so. It's not really purchasing anything. It's just, um, uh, using labor.
Yeah, it's outsourcing the.
Right, we're bored. A proposal?
Is that something, well, that works, though, just have somebody on call as opposed to having somebody on staff.
I mean, I'm not.
Well, my promise is out, I'm calling bones. So, yeah, it's not like that stuff. For an electrician, you know.
I'm going to say, I'm, I'm not in the building, so I'm probably not equipped to answer this, but how much stuff on a daily basis breaks around here? Before in any of our other maintaining.
We break first.
You know, I mean.
When we had that, that handyman working twenty hours a week and then down to ten, what was going on was primarily a lot of trash being emptied, um, a lot of projects being denied that we were asking to be completed. Um, just regular routine things that I had been picking up, like checking the, the tire extinguisher. Um, checking, you know, replacing the filter, uh, we should show we had it, not we should, um, uh, burn it. Show me how to replace the filter over at town hall and, and fill the, you know, the, the water filter, the, the, the sotner tablet salt. And we all liked to do the trash.
He wasn't doing a lot of these things that you require.
He was doing all of these small things, but not the major projects refused basically to do any major project. And so it didn't make sense to me to have someone, paying someone
Not somebody like.
That much money to empty the trash and to do stuff that I can do and making the same amount of money. Doesn't make sense.
And still have to contract out for the larger projects.
Yes. I have, can I say something? Cause this was astonishing, um. I don't know if Michelle has told this like worth, but we lost our snowbirds on our live.
There's a few of them, yes.
Yeah. Sorry, oh, I'm jumping the gun for you. All of a sudden Sally's in our office screaming, the snowbird fell off and I was like, what? The snow came down into all the snowbirds.
One of them.
On that side. Came down and, and so, um, yeah, so twenty, like, over, I think like forty, we ended up picking up forty. The snow was ranted about this speed and there's no way to really rake it off in my mind.
No, it's snow guards.
Snow guards are in the way.
But the way they installed them, they were supposed to go up and they had little hooks and you were supposed to put around nails. I don't think any of them were hooking around any of them. It was just like, and the man, the company said, so I called them immediately, I took photos and called them immediately and said, we have a problem and why would you, and he said, well, your roof is bad. I told Bob that the roof was bad and I said, why? I don't care what you said, why would you install a product if you think that it's not going to hold? Doesn't make any sense to me. Anyway, they came out, picked up their, their product and gave us a full refund, but I was livid because that could have impaled people and we had such a mess as far as the liability and, and potential harm on somebody. So we have to figure out how to move forward. He said that the roof is bad, um, and it won't support anything.
But on the backside, we have one up, it's been up for years and it's being supported.
Yeah. I think it was faulty delivery. Um, I talked to this contractor I have in mind and he thinks it's fa, it was faulty, faulty, not delivery, but installation.
Yeah. But we did get a full refund from that side.
Oh, wow, right after. She called him up immediately.
The thing is, with slate roof, it has ribs and they should have put hooks up over the ribs, which meant we had to lift the tiles. And they did not, they just sort of slipped it under the tile, which
That's all they did.
Going this much, it's going to bend and let go. So it was faulty installation.
Thankfully nobody got hurt, I suppose.
Well, Sally lost a year of her life. She goes, oh my God, did you just hear that? She said, we're like, yeah, we heard something.
So then I did get in, asked them for any move. Um, we can install a, a snow guard similar, that's just a short one, similar to the one on the back side to cover only the door, but I know that Bob was insisted that we get the full amount of the, uh, the ramp covered. But I don't know in fairness that anybody who uses the ramp, still, it's still our, our responsibility, but shovel.
Well, because that's the ADA.
Well, I don't know if we installed a, a base snow guard similar to the back on the fronts. Can't we then just give a snow rake and keep pulling it off? The pulling the, the snow off the other portion that doesn't fall down.
Yeah, if there was someone there every day and then wanted to shovel it off the deck.
Man, I don't mind, I've been doing it for a while and we have anyone to do it as well. Do the shoveling, but I think we can get a, a rake. Purchase one of the snow rakes.
They're about seventy dollars.
Well, we have one of the transfer stations that's not being used, so you can go get it.
Another donation from a transfer station.
It's snow rake. We do, yes, it's blue. Chanja, uh, Junior dropped it off one day and said we could use it and we never did it.
Yeah, the thing's only eighteen inches wide. That's all it is.
Yeah, and they, you, we're doing it all these to keep the stuff off the.
Sold it out. Because sometimes you need to take it off. The true head thing if it gets too deep.
So as ever, if it's this year, I just think that maybe we consider putting a, a, a similar, unless you guys really, the board really wants to look at getting a roof and we figure out, we can, you know. And we don't going to have.
I don't think, I don't think you're going to be able to invent.
If you're, if you're, because you don't have anything under the slate. It'd have to be a slate roof and.
Well, who says just that it's the roof's no good? I, I, I need two or three people that talk.
And he's trying to cover his.
And if in fact the roof is no good, then who owns the liability of taking a roof that sheds snow and then having it hold up two feet of wet heavy snow?
Right.
You know, so if the roof is in fact no good, is it structurally no good or is it leaking on all the books and we don't know about it? I mean, that's just.
No, he just said the, the slate tiles are so old that he suspects that whatever is attaching them, it's a.
Anyway, um, refocusing back to the handyman thing, right? That's where we started this adventure.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, how? Does it need to be an in-house position? It doesn't sound like your opinion is it needs to be in-house.
Because I've asked around and we've already divided up the tasks. And, um, I don't think that there are any hard feelings, you don't want to do it.
No, to go there at least twice a weekend, so.
Sally pitching and doing the job, I mean, she has two numbers. For these particular things, I, you know, it's just scheduling furnace repairs and, and, and inspections and things that are not time consuming.
So I was picking it up at the town hall.
Yes, oh, majorly those people leave a lot of trash.
Well, there's been a lot of parties lately.
And I think it was the one that I gave.
So I personally am not opposed to it. I, I would like to revisit and see how it, it's working out, you know, maybe six months or something. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
Yeah, I would love to see. I think that's what I would be on that survey to revisit.
Yeah. So revisit again after we've done for a couple of seasons, maybe in, in the June or something.
Yeah.
So I guess just do on-call, on-site.
I think I'm also the right effect.
Yep.
All second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so carry on.
Good news, just, you know, Sylvia will be back this weekend. I'm so happy. He threw his bag out. I was hoping to get it back.
Uh, and then some snowbirds. Do we want to, we have a snow rake, so we'll just continue as is, um, but maybe consider using snowbirds similar to what we got there on that door. About getting one.
Do you know who installed that one?
I guess I do. He's back with Dan Nois, they're over at the town hall and they're here. Dan Nois ordered them for us and had somebody put them in. That was ages ago, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And somewhere, they were as many as Morrisville.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I think it is a bit of quote from that.
I mean, that one's been married for.
Ones in the town hall are still holding up too. We did it over where we have the trash receptacle there, it was falling off people's cars when they parked it. But you're not glad you liked them.
They were okay. I have a lot of policy at the prime branch to see whether made in Denmark or China.
Those are all there until you, you know, until you're done.
Until you're safe. Oh, good. I hadn't bothered to tip it over when I accidentally felt the seat on the table.
Oh.
So the generator engine was replaced. I, I sent you this email, but just for the record, it's functioning at full capacity. Uh, the Wilkott Elementary School generator has been installed and is up and running. We had, we have lights here and in the other room now, those have been rewired, so now that, um, they're really what we're proposing to do with every one of these lights, so they were rewired.
What's the cost?
I don't know, yeah. It was estimated at maybe six or six, five hundred.
He was here, in and out, no time. Even left us the old button. He said he can't take them anymore.
But we don't know if the bulbs are burned out, so I try one. But we can start replacing both the fluorescent and valet. I have, I need approval for the better back roads category D grants, uh, that we're, we're applying for. It's for the public replacement on Elmore Pond Road. Uh, we need signature. Our cost share, because the town, uh, don't expect to do the work, the, the town will do the work, so our cost share is, um, for this grant would be thirty-five eighty-three, so three thousand five hundred eighty-three dollars and we would be contributing thirty-four uh, three thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars in labor equipment, so the cost to the town follows to, um, estimate would be a hundred fifteen dollars for this over. All of its wealth according to. No, we end up paying kind of fifty. Over and above.
My just thirty, yeah, our my just thirty-five, but we're only contributing thirty-four.
The cost share, yes, right. And, and we can only contribute thirty-four sixty-eight in our labor.
Oh, so we have to pay additional a hundred, okay.
So I'll get your, um, I think we've already talked about this, but I'm not seeing a motion this far.
Yeah, we need a motion from the board to apply for the better back roads. And to replace the cover where
on, uh, on Elmore Pond Road, it's, I can get you the address.
I'll make a motion to approve applying for a better back roads grant to replace a cover on East.
Of Elmore Pond.
Elmore Pond.
All second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so carry on.
And then we need approval for the Royal Valley Trail Grant. I need two signatures to apply for that grant. It basically says you approved the twenty percent is cost share.
Make a motion to apply for the Royal Valley Trail Grant. We're in.
All second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, so carry on.
Um, we're doing the labor, the contract negotiations and, and, uh, executive session, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I followed up on text my dub, a question you had asked last week, Linda, um. I put out, so text my dub is the emergency alert via text. Um, put out a front porch forum, a request from, you know, input from the, the residents in Wilkott and twelve people responded, all positive, saying yes, they, they were really interested in, um, getting something like that set up. For the, the town. Uh, I put, uh, I sent an email out to committees. And, um, the forest committee said that they wouldn't use it. The library possibly said they would. The rep committee also said possibly they could use it. Jim Roberts felt it would be great for emergency alerts. I talked to Jim Holton today and he said that Waterbury uses this, this system. And, um, I also know that Hardwood has just signed on for this text my dub. Jim thinks that it could be, he says that there is a free system called, um, BNC alerts, but it's just for, people need to sign up for it. Um, and it's only for emergencies. I have to say that the town has, we have on our website, the ability to sign up for emails. I talked to, uh, to Bradley today. Four people have signed up for emergency responses to the email, just for, and, you know. Um, so with this particular service, I'm not selling it, I'm just giving you the facts, but this particular service, again, do you think um, be given four hundred and I think twenty-one household, head of household cellphone numbers. Add a six hundred something households. Add a six hundred something households. Um. I did talk to the sales rep today, she said that she could possibly increase. The twenty-five thousand texts per year to fifty if we wanted it with no, no extra charge. Um. And again, possible uses would be, the uses that Hardwood is going to be using it for. Or send out messages of water, we provide several little words, article issues. Ask questions of the mom, budget questions and response, and spoil. Water notices for alerts and reports from residents. Um we could actually open it up, and I don't know if we want to, but we could open it up to. The public to text us for road issues, things like that. Much like we have the email.
Well, it would be texting as personally.
No, it's texting. Whoever receives these texts.
This leads me to my question. In each committee and and department that's going to use this. Have they got the capacity and resources to to fully appreciate what this system will do?
I talked to Jim today and I told him about the way that, you know, for emergency alerts, they would send it out. Um and so each department uses, Belinda, probably the fire department and me. Uh will be trained. Doing this, maybe the road crew. We'll see, probably. Okay. Um would be trained in setting it up. And again, it has this, the uh the ability to just select on a particular geographic region. And it will show you all of the cellphone numbers that lie in that region. So if you're just doing certain areas of flooding. Need my ability to select on geographic regions as well. How much is it even?
Eighteen hundred eighty of that, for three years from now.
So eighteen hundred a year, they were well comprised for three years?
Correct.
That comes with tech support. And setting it up for. What did, what did you set up on? Uh it's set up uh on a map. So they created a map and then they set, they set a widget up on our, I talked to Bradley as well. Um. And they set the widget up on our website and that widget is to opt in. For, um and I would like um an opting in for email generally. We could think about it longer, but they do need to hear by December thirtieth, otherwise the field kind of goes away.
That's true.
I don't know.
It'll be, it'll just won't be this one.
I think because they wait the five hundred dollars set up, we need all of these other little discount.
Kind of rope us in. I know.
They're trying to rope you.
Yeah.
I have to say, I really like the idea of that. Like I could send out texts, your taxes are due tomorrow. Get your books in here. But I don't know if that would go over the amount of texts that we would need, like for emergencies and stuff. Well, if I get it increased to fifty thousand, then we'd be okay.
The ICSA dog licenses do, would be good.
Yeah, it's me, instead of me sending out those little notices, yes, I would say.
We're waiting to have them responding twenty-four seven. That. Yeah, are you saying that people will be sending you emails like anytime? That's what they don't. Uh it can just be a one-way exchange. People, you know, always need lives.
Come, I get emails at home.
I know, but.
I can try to disable.
I can, doctor, you'll lose your phone sometime.
Yeah. It's a nice service, I'd like, I'd like us to have it, I just, it's eighteen hundred a year and I worry that it's one of those things that. We'll get it here, we'll get set up and then it'll get lost in a week, so we just won't, we just won't utilize it.
Oh, I know. But I don't hope that anybody gets.
Or you can see the fire department and definitely you leave it. The highway, I definitely the road just enough.
It would be for like um road closures, it would just be another communication. We would not stop the other, the other forms of notification.
Well, and we did receive some feedback too during the the wasteland thing about. You know, notices, the the minimum not being.
Well, this way, we advertise on those texts, we have a boat coming up. But you know, I don't have any boats coming up other than these town ones this next year.
Uh one person responded and said, look, I don't get cell service at my house. And I was like, well, you have wifi, your phone should be set to wifi call.
Oh, and you said that we could get email component, nobody's really any of that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I mean, but nobody's signing it. The email component is separate, I would just like to see that there's a widget there that it also says. If you don't have a cellphone, you know, then. You can't receive messages that can email.
I mean, this would be good for the people in the town, but the people from out of town. It's not going to work for them for.
Yes.
Road closures, hazards, whatever.
Well, again, we would still do the the normal putting it out on a front porch forum, putting on our website.
If they know we have that, sorry.
Oh, then I don't know how they.
They'll just run into this great big roadblock.
Well, I mean, they're not hearing about them anyway now. If if they don't know to either look on the website or go to front porch forum. Um we notify the sheriff's department and then the uh dispatch and then the the bus, school bus. Those are the four that you do. Which we could continue. We we will continue, because I don't think this would be unfair, you'd have to be just an additional.
You're getting a hundred dollars in your budget going into the.
Well, I'm thinking, I have that election, if we did elections on it, I might be able to justify nine hundred dollars that I have left. I've been sitting here contemplating that. But it would mean you guys would have to come up with the other.
Yeah, but that's just for one year. We're locked in for three.
Well, crap, I don't have that.
You don't have twenty-seven.
I can obviously buy another three, huh? I don't have feeling.
Yeah, it'd be at, the year after, couldn't it be like combined and probably the IT budget? That would make sense?
Yeah, it certainly could be, but that doesn't make the money right in.
Well, I could write a check, they would have waited until um.
I think they'll come back and then ask.
See how things shake out here.
I think they'll be back in six months. Yeah, yeah, try that, reach out and say, listen, we can't move on it until.
At least give it a little more time.
There.
If that means the deal goes away, if you're gonna take this deal away over eight days, then I guess you weren't for us anyway.
Hmm. Um and so see if they can wait until mid-June.
Well, you mean April.
Yeah, certainly after the eighth, we'll see when the budget's like. You know, how horrendous this is, and by then we'll have our info from the. Owners.
Yep.
For fund balance.
Actually, we got them all by the, well, next month.
Um well, we, Mike and I met with Cory and Mark with the planning commission to discuss the first steps in the um. In the multi-step work. Energy grant that we received. Uh first step is to apply for financial hardship, so I'm going to pull that information together. Um we'll need to know, Cory suggested that we use um the information about how. We've had to take out um of the revolving credit line or the loan, ninety-dollar loan, you know. Uh the second step is to commit to the continuation form, which I will again get on to. Um and then the third step is to get a local solar company to give some general solar array design. And see if the roof can support the panels um that we have requested or then just the little guy. Um as far as the highway department, we have hired Michael, you know, Reno, thirty hours per week. And he's on call three out of four weekends. Uh we've set up the schedule, he has been cleared and so he has been already working pretty hard. For us, I just want to point out again that when he works on the weekends on call. If he's called in. He is saving us twenty-one dollars an hour in overtime, because the average overtime is forty, forty-six dollars an hour and his pay. With what we pay and we're still earning, we're saving twenty dollars. On the three weekends that he called in. So if you wrote through, has the option to not have him, to, you know, if they want to earn. The the overtime on the weekends, we don't have to have Reno work for us, work for them. Um. I met with Dylan and we finalized the highway office tools that we'll be using, like the Google Calendar, the roads database and the equipment. Uh maintenance and repair sheets, as well as the winter time sheets, I set them up on Dylan's computer. And then he is going to um, we've set up the schedule for him to start coming into the office. Every morning during, during the weeks to uh start populating those databases. Uh put out the winter sand RFP, uh. Um I, Lynn and I opened that today. And um I have the award, if you'd like to see it. Um let's just put this up. This is very concerning. Well, choices. So um gravel by far has the lower, lowest bid. Uh oil assessment. They came in at uh seven seventy-five per cubic yard and we require five thousand, cubic yards roughly per year. So they came in at thirty-eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Um. I'd like to note that they also, Dylan's been talking to several locations to see if. Um instead of buying crushed bad, a stone and adding it in separately. If if they could actually do a glance on site. Well, in and an additional dollar fifteen per cubic yard to screen the sand in with by outside, having crushed stones. And even at that rate, they're still below as good. But at that rate, it would put us up to forty. Um. If I have it on there, if that will put us up to forty.
I don't see any numbers for anything.
You had it on one of these pages, it was forty-six something.
Forty, yes. Oh, yeah, I know, I know, but it is, yes. It would go with the budget we dropped in forty-six, we just don't know, because Sylvan hasn't been in. I don't know if he pays. He's been mixing his own sand already, that rock, additional rock in with the sand, so. I don't know what budget he's been pulling that from.
Right, if he's been taking touch gravel and adding it on, we need to know like what invoices we did with that, so we can look at the prices that you pay.
Well, on your year-to-date, I started with a couple of different things that. Solve, currently we haven't solved yet.
But we haven't paid any bills, we just barely got the contract from the car bill.
Yeah, it's gravel. It's, it's gravel, bill is zero in the air as well, but anyway. I, my personal opinion is that he shouldn't be mixing it, I don't, I don't see how it could be cost-effective. Even at nine and a quarter a yard, I don't see how it could be more cost-effective for him to do it here. I don't think that to mix is that good, seeing what's been applied on the roads so far this year. Um you have the wind from the tires that won't it off the roads, there's no base layer of sand. And sand there doesn't really have attraction value to it, because there's not enough soil to. In my opinion, um. I think that we should, I think that we should look up the state sand spec, but it's a little late. I think we should move on the site mixed sand, haul it and touch it once, don't mix it again. The guys have got enough to do without screwing the sand up.
I agree, because then, I mean, when are they mixing it? Are they mixing it when they're hauling it? I mean, when?
Right.
You just dump some load, I think, you just dump some load of gravel on top.
Well, that's not mixing it, you could go to broadening, you could get all some.
Although they'll process it with the loader, they'll stir it in, they'll do whatever, but it's still. If our goal is to try and get more efficiency and more production out of the highway department. They don't need to be messing around with something that can be done in a fit where there are people and equipment doing it. Even if it doesn't have a dollar a yard.
Some of those shares.
I mean, yes.
And so. You're hoping to do then the forty-six. And so increase the budget to that, and then wherever, because he's been doing it, I just don't know where he's been pulling that money from. Maybe decrease the budget in another section.
Well, we paid so far this year forty-three thousand, so we're already over the forty. And if we didn't get the mix and this is at forty-six, it might be worth it.
Right. Depending on whether or not that forty-three is already absorbing the stone cost, I don't know.
Exactly.
And it's confusing, because remember, sometimes he goes like right before the year ends and gets more, and I don't know.
I think we need to put him on the schedule when they haul sand.
Yeah.
Well, this year though, gravel was willing to work with us because we could haul where fiscal year started. Yeah, I don't want to restrict that too much, I kind of like.
You'll like me, as long as they don't bill me in terms of why.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. What I'm seeing is if it's a project they need to do, I'm going to see them do that project and haul it. Instead of putting it up to be like a better back road.
Do uh, does someone want to make a motion to approve? And approve the award?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve it to uh gravel. I think that one, three minutes. Five percent added stone. How do we quantify that?
Out of five thousand parts of sand, how much is that gravel put in?
Yeah, how do we, how do we quantify that and how do we quality control that, actually? I don't, I would like to, for a moment, to track the motion.
You can reset. You can reset, it would be different.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a screen, it's a five percent adding crush, the crushed stone add. Um to the base bid, add the base bid credits. Note that.
So out of nine cubic feet, five percent would be point, no, yeah, half a yard. Oh, what a half yard. It's not very much. Maybe a bucket, yes, a bucket of crushed stone per cubic.
Alright, so we don't need to know until January eighth. Really, but they come back with clarity and opinion, not like we have to figure it out yourself.
Please, what is five percent of what?
Well, what is, what is the sieve spec? I mean, it's, this is their industry, this is what they do, what, what, what? Sive, sives, uh S A I V E, S I E. Uh get that back.
What's the ratio between the two?
Screens, gold screens.
Yeah.
No, that's.
S C R E A.
I don't know what I said.
Been on the three-quarter inch, uh on the the three-quarter inch. Uh land. Um and they're just saying, they're adding five percent, adding maybe more crushed stone, they just want.
Did Sam, they're adding the crushed stone. Well, because, and I didn't read this year's RFP, but three years ago, the RFP said three-quarter stone preferred. There was no, there was no specifications, and I don't know what we put out this year, I didn't read it, but.
Same.
Uh. You know, I don't mean to tell Dylan how to do his job, but there, there are sieve specs available for this. So that, you know, they are providing, we are, we know what we're buying and they are providing. So that, you know, they are providing, we are, we know what we're buying and they are providing what we're looking for.
And then did we put like a yard inch amount?
Yeah, five thousand.
So I'm wondering, why did we go over? When we only wanted five thousand at a certain price, why, why is the stuff, why is the winter sand over?
I don't know. I can look at the bills and find that and send it to you.
Well, just count. Well, that's what I want to know. I mean, and so does. Does the stone take up more room for? For yardage or whatever and then?
No, we are, it's a yard.
Plus they're bold.
What I would like is the price. I don't want to figure it out. I want him to tell me how much it's gonna be.
And how much? It's a dollar fifty.
I don't know. No, I don't want to figure it out.
She wants to.
I want him to say fifty thousand dollars or it's.
The final price.
Or we know it's. We know it's thirty eight yards. And whatever he's gonna do for what we want, I want.
And not a penny more.
No.
She's giving real tongue side vibes right here. Best I can do is an, an apple core.
It's too confusing.
Yes, you want to know apples to apples. You want to have to determine. So you say exactly.
Yes.
Do I have to say any?
He can say that the board decide, uh. Decided to put up awarding the bid until their January eighth meeting when we had more information.
They tabled the decision.
Yeah.
And that's just from gravel, correct? Gravel construction.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the motion was to award to gravel. So it's a table.
Do I have to say that we're tabling your motion?
We're not making a motion. So yes. We're just putting up.
Your order was tabled until the January eighth meeting.
The decision is just tabled, yeah. Not no warning.
Finally, one more thing. I'm gonna start working on the after ready contract with this RFP in early January.
Michelle has been helping me quite a bit with the buyouts because it's been hairy and effective. Lately.
Yes, that's what that orders for is to for those runs. Very, uh. It's been very horrible.
Do you mean that you just need signatures, uh, signatures for? Uh. Rounds, but that's just one. And this is the contract for the complete dedication for five, for twenty six. That lending, you just need this one.
Hey, Brenda.
Yes.
You don't have any raspberry jam in these.
I have candies.
No, no, that's alright. I just picked, I just picked tonight. Thank you.
Gravel, is that what?
She's listening.
Yeah.
I just know what. Nice combination orange, tomato, and peanut butter. Feed with this raspberry jam with the seeds. Yeah, that sounds like that'd be alright.
It was, it was nice and crumbly, give it kind of a nice old chart. Let's do it then. That's alright.
Let's see about the seeds. Little seed jar. Really good, so I'd say.
Okay, yeah.
Not that good, I'm looking for service. But you don't have a case of a bottle. It's your assessment. I said your assessment on, it's like, and one Christmas I had my wife make that jelly. And I gave them out as Christmas gifts. Some people, as very mixed feelings about that. And I said, no, they were never used. And they were boiled, it was. Wouldn't it, yeah. Aren't you in same?
This is the order for the, uh, down payment to pay for.
Some of them really didn't want to give.
People can take all the time out of it.
I still got some of them.
So they can go in and test.
The unit has that part of the answer. Patient's name.
So I just did an R P L today and given now.
Alright, well, I got it.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the, uh. Quick board review and, and who's in order I'm passing around. So Bruce Wheeler had resigned from the planning commission. I don't know, misunderstanding or something. He would like to be reappointed to the planning commission. We just need a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Then?
Yeah.
Have a second?
I'll say.
Any further discussions? Others in favor?
Alright.
The pros, so carried. I passed around here, uh, pictures that I can share with. Your picture on which, or I know Chris thought.
You don't have that only, but.
I only made the rating.
Or we can go through it.
I just wanted to bring to your attention when they raised a, a flat iron road. And they raised it up two feet and moved it over. Uh, they created a problem with the. Fire hydrant that they brought out. Through our attention. After it was completed.
This is one thing that I think we should forget.
We should what?
Forget. Not even worry about. Those two lines went to a tank at the elementary school. The tank is no longer being purged. So if you pump water into a tank that has a four foot hole. It doesn't hold water that well.
Well, have you, what, then why is the fire department having to do about it?
I don't know. I talked with Steve Prince and said, why? I said, it's not going to do you any good. It's pushing water into a tank. It has a big hole in it. Until they replace the tank.
Two, uh, two fifty permit. So who should replace the tank?
Yep, to the.
School?
School. The district. That was part of the, uh.
Back two fifty.
Back two fifty. That's been leaking.
Well, it has been. Something's been leaking.
Twenty, over twenty years, it's been leaking. We just put a regular steel tank and no liner, no.
So what does Steve Prince say?
I just told him to forget it. I said, well, we gotta have it.
What did Steve Prince say about the leaking tank?
Didn't know that.
Well.
He thought it was a hydrant that went up there. I said, no, it goes into a tank. A holding tank for the sprinkler system.
Is there not an ASB document or instruction document or something that shows all of that? This is just standing.
District would have to have it. They're the ones that paid for it.
I mean, yeah, expectations with.
Well, we better get on with Jim right ASAP because he just ordered ten thousand dollars worth of stuff, that's it. Um, I mean, this is the first I'm hearing that there's a leak there.
Then that weighs over twenty years.
Well, I would have thought that the, the school would have fixed it. Does anyone know about it besides you?
Uh, I don't think Jim would realize it unless he fixed it within the. Last I knew it was whenever Anderson and I were in charge. So I wouldn't know if the district went in and fixed it or not.
Does the school even know? Do they have enough changeover? They even know that?
I don't even know if the principals would even have been all, not too much changeover then down. They, they change it over every three, four years. So.
Even still, there, there need, somebody has to have a record of that system somewhere. It needs to exist.
It's a, the district and.
I mean, how other banana go in, in memory, you know, your memory, how do we know that it has failed? Is it intestine? Are these some intestine?
Well, there was a hydraulic study done. But I, that wouldn't tell about the tank or whatever. No.
So that one, it sounds like it needs an inspection to be sure. I think maybe it's still.
It's the district that needs to inspect it. It's not qualified, you always.
So we went in that solution, I'm contractors, so the architect and engineer, um. And determined that, uh, they were gonna put some piping on it to. Bring it up. And. When Jim contacted the insurance. And I'm not sure if it's his insurance or the store insurance. But they needed, before they went okay, they needed a hydraulic study and analysis. Which I have. And wanted to. Then, uh. The, the proposed installation has no effect on the performance of the hydraulic. System.
Well, and regardless of whether or not what is in there now fails or has failed. It needs to be fixed. So the end user part of it on this side needs to be fixed. Regardless.
So I'm only bringing it to you because I don't know who's gonna pay for this. I guess.
Was, we were well. Under the, the, uh. Estimates for flat iron, right?
That one I have not gotten an obligation for it might be, but that one has not been. Obligated yet. So I don't know. I think they just, they just finished it up. It was just about to be finished though.
Younger at the school, this is gonna be less inclined to remember this when they realize they have paid for it. And of course, if this is a word, then they have a sprinklers at some at school, right? Which I would think would shut them down. Pretty sure the Department of Fire Safety is gonna, number one, have records back. What the school members are gonna does. DFS and part of their obligations are gonna update their will have a sound file.
Right. And it should have testing at some level.
Unless they changed it over. So it's coming off in their main water system. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I don't know how, how any of that was.
Want to tell it. I mean, if we don't need to maintain it, then that would be.
No, we don't have to maintain it, but we created, all, all the town's responsibility is. We created the problem by. Raising the road and moving it over. We created the problem so that. They, the fire trucks are standing on the road. They have to go down in this ditch and like, and there's not much snow there. That's gonna be covered with snow.
Right.
And they want to. So idea to fix it was to get some things and bring them up so they could hook them on up by.
Elbow it up.
Right. We created that and then I'm not.
Oh.
It's the problem. When.
I mean, we can fix.
Really, the engineer should have.
They're, they're entering a policy somewhere in her.
At the city.
I think the simplest answer is hopefully the obligation is higher and we can equals. We can use that because I think flat iron was one of, proposed to. Recover a lot of the losses that we realized on the Jones Road.
Alright, wasn't being possible on the tour. I just wanted to make sure we knew.
Yeah, well, this is all a new to me. So I'm just telling you today. Um. And we'll get some more research done on it.
Especially if they have an issue up there.
Right.
Fire sanitation for the school and it's not there.
So if you're getting more research higher, we still, is someone gonna contact the gym to say? Fault for a bit or is it just more research on who's gonna pay for it? Or, or are we just gonna figure out how to pay for it? We have to, to.
And, and regardless, the system was installed in order to get occupancy in the building. You know, this end of it needs to be fixed so that the fire department can use it.
I don't want to be responsible for something on our.
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be fixed. Needs to be fixed. One way or the other, it needs to be fixed.
And if the tank truly has failed, then that needs to be fixed as well. Would that sound like a, a question for later? Find out whether or not it's been tested, been repaired previously, and then who owns that?
So this says product to be shipped on or before. Uh, December thirtieth. So I have time to talk to Jim.
I mean, has to answer J P on that?
Well.
I'll say need J P. Yep, P D.
Right, uh, school street demo contract, uh. Michelle sent that out to you all. This is just to make the formal. Motion in the meeting to hire.
Wait, uh. Demolition service.
To, uh, complete the demolition at four sixty two School Street. Put it out to bid. Uh, both. Michelle and I opened the bids. It's a time sensitive thing.
That's the motion that we go forward with it. Also.
Right, we have a motion as second to award, uh, the. Demolition at four sixty two School Street to complete demolition services. All those in favor?
Right.
opposed, so carried. They have started. Dear Swampland Trust. Were you able to find any people who want to be on the committee?
No one's contacted me. I don't know. Do you have the town offices or not? We thought we're the committee. No, I don't know. I don't like being on it, but I'm not the committee. I was the committee.
Your assignment was to see if you could find some people. Do you need someone like Michelle to put something on on your board tomorrow?
I thought that was done.
Um, no, I don't think so. No, you, no, it's not mentioned. I'll leave with her and maybe you can find a way to reach out to people. They already did the town meeting review. They already talked about the handyman. Meeting forest bridge. Oh, we're getting. Um. So my assignment was to find out from insurance, uh, what it would cost. To insure a fifty five thousand dollar footbridge. It would be. A hundred and sixty dollars. For a year. And if it's in a flood zone, it would be a hundred and eighty four. And it looks like it's in the. It's in the flood zone. But yeah, kind of minor one, a, a one percent annual chance of flooding per year. But it's. There it is. The bridge and this is the flood zone.
Oh, it's in it. Don't make it.
So. It's one eighty four more year.
About one eighty with, with the flood.
Yeah, under eighty four probably it's more year.
Isn't the coverage on that is nothing superstructure. It's all just that game.
Yeah.
Probably out of the whole of the. The flood coverage either.
Well, we don't have a choice. We don't have a choice.
Yeah.
If it's in the flood plain, it's either. We aren't gonna ensure. Then we're gonna take a chance or we're gonna ensure. Um, it would be one eighty four year.
I'm sorry, did you say the jet's like coverage? I would just say.
Yeah, I, I, when we read through the policy before. The pedestrian footbridge coverage. Was pretty limited.
And it would be again if we've made broken coverage.
As I understand it, but that's. Just interpretation of it.
So what many coverage are we listening?
Keep in mind the exclusions in the covered pedestrian bridge extension. Covered is excluded for abutments, structural support, wing walls, piers, and filings. Of covered bridges and pedestrian footbridges.
Right, so my interpretation of that is.
Just a decking.
Yeah, right. Do abutments, it won't do, uh, they don't mention, they don't mention girders. They don't mention the actual cross portions. They just mention.
The supports.
So it won't do, the insurance won't cover abutments essentially.
Or wing walls or supporting it.
So it only covers then the flanking and the, the rails?
Yeah, I could give you this after. So it seems kind of silly then. I mean.
Well, it, it might do the girders.
It sounds like it would do the girders. It sounds like it'll do decking.
It'll do the bridge, but it won't do when it'd be abutment work, yeah, wing walls.
But if we. Had a flood that were substantial enough to take the wing walls out, I mean, wouldn't we be able to? Ask FEMA, I guess FEMA, I don't know, would FEMA cover something like that? Downhill property.
Um, yeah, they're, I mean, they're paying for the ball field.
So. It would cover everything that FEMA might not in a lesser. For a hundred and eighty-four dollars a year for a thousand dollar bridge. I mean, how many years can we pay a hundred and eighty-four dollars before we? You know, I mean, I say insure.
It'd fall apart before, yeah, get to the insurance.
And remember that, um, because it's in the flood zone, and so it says. It does cover flood, but if it is in a flood zone A, which it is. Um, it would be subject to the one million occurrence and. Ten million all members. So that means like. If there's another big flood, they only are gonna spend ten million dollars than what they divided up.
And we can never get more than a million.
We don't need a million, yeah.
That'd be a not directly type, right?
It's a full plate it.
Oh, proposal violation. Ground.
Still, I say insure, a hundred and eighty-four dollars a year.
So, you want to take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we insure the forest committee's pedestrian footbridge for a hundred and eighty-four dollars a year.
I'll second that motion.
Do you have any further questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. So carry. So I'm gonna make a motion that we go into executive session.
Help me that.
Second it. To executive session and I'll make, in my motion, I'd like to include. Michelle. At eighty fifty-three. So I'm gonna make a motion to come out of executive session at nine oh five P M.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. So carry. I'll make a motion to accept the uh, agreement between the town of Woburn and Massachusetts and Northern New England Labor's District Council. Also known as Local Union six six eight.
I'll second the motion.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Post. So carry. This is for July one twenty-five to June thirtieth of twenty. We have any other business to attend to?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
He wasn't paying attention. I wanted to rush the boat here. But I'll find, I got a sweep table in the microwave waiting for me.
So will you need to have a time sweep that?
Looping. I'm, I gotta look up what it is, but I shouldn't be, alright, I think it's.